All right. Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. I am calling to order the Fountain City Council meeting for August 13th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anybody hear the Olympic music in their mind while you were saying that? That we've all heard the last 16 days? All righty. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Just to let everybody know, if you were here for the Fountain Valley Senior Center update from their director, they will not be in attendance tonight. They're, they'll be back at a different time. And so that takes us to Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Just thank you for letting me be here tonight to give you a quick update on the year of 2024 and everything's been going on in Parks and Rec. As you can see, that's our current staffing right there. We're short one part-time seasonal right now. He went back to college. If you like basketball, he's a basketball player for John Howard University, so we'll be watching him this year. Next slide. Recent accomplishments, we hosted two volunteer days, each with over 100 volunteers and completed 40 projects. That's how we get, have been getting a lot of our work done is through these volunteer groups, especially as you'll see on the next slide with our staffing issues we've had to overcome this year. We completed two joint tournaments with Fort Carson and Peterson Space Force Base for basketball, and we also did another one for flag football, and they both turned out great, and we're looking forward to have another flag football tournament with the two military bases this fall. We added additional playground equipment and landscaping to Heritage Park with the support of Heritage Special Maintenance District and Advisory Board. That project's still going on. We're hoping to get that wrapped up in the next couple weeks or possibly a month. We received two sponsors for our movie night in the park. We have been paying for those out of, or had planned on paying for those out of budget, but luckily two sponsors came forward with big donations, so they're helping us cover the cost of the movies. We adopted out additional parks. Metcalf Park and Fountain Mesa Park are now adopted out. Navy Federal Credit Union adopted Fountain Mesa Park, and Restoration Youth, Boys, Middle Schools adopted Metcalf Park. Splash Pad was only closed for scheduled maintenance or replacement of the maintenance valves, opened late twice due to replacement parts less than three hours, and one time for safety for seven hours. That was also out of our control due to some police activity going on in the area. I know a lot of people think we're closed more, but we actually only had a close for that valve replacement. Everything else, we were able to get the splash pad back up and running for electrical issues because we have to call in a professional electrician for those. Next slide. Challenges have been finding volunteers for youth recreation programs. We still continue to struggle with that. Our volunteer coordinator, Bill Finland, is now attending the farmers markets on Saturdays, and he's got a lot of interest from people in the community who didn't know this was an issue, so just another way for us to communicate our needs to the public. Communication between the city and the community and community has still been a challenge, especially for teenagers and young adults. A lot of times, we had a silent disco planned, and we only had five teens sign up for it. We're going to host it with the YMCA, at the YMCA, and just got to get better at our communication and figuring out how to reach people, especially as social media platforms continue to grow and change year to year. Another big challenge is hosting events over 200 participants with limited park staff. This year, we'll host 34 of those, and I don't know if y'all saw a couple weeks ago, we had Guam Liberation Festival. We had close to 1,000 people come from around the state to attend that event, so that's, that's rough on our small parks and on our staff as well to get it back up and operational afterwards. Another big issue we've had this, this year is irrigation leaks. We continue to replace valves, replace brakes, controllers, and it's just an aging system that I don't want to say that we've neglected in the past, but parts are expensive and it's just time for us to go in there and replace some of those parts that are 15, 20 years or older. Hosting more than 20 recreation events with one full-time employee, this year, we cut back down to 22. When I started in the recreation department back in 2017, we only offered six programs. At the height, we got up to 27, but with one recreation employee, that's still a lot to ask for one person. We ran, I got the numbers here for you. Youth programs this year, we ran 10. Last year, we ran 12. For adult programs, last year, we ran eight. This year, we cut it back to six. Special events for both years, we've done six, and we're still struggling to meet the community's needs even, even with that amount of programming with one staff member. So there's definitely a need for more programming in the city as far as recreation is, is shown. And some of the programs, we had a cut. For example, softball, the community really didn't like that, but it came down to hours and time in the day and, and the level of participation we got for it. We found that other programs were getting more participation than softball, so we decided to get rid of softball to, that way staff can have better programs. I'd rather offer fewer programs than a bunch of programs that are not properly ran properly. And then, as far as park staffing over there, you can see, and I'd just like to explain some of the numbers you see on the right there. The, the first number you see on that top line for March, 598, and then you see 1,516, and then a negative 918. So the negative 918 represents the amount, amount of hours we were unable to work with our current staff levels. And for a community like us and a staff like us that are already small, if you'll go back and look at your, the Parks and Rec and Trails Master Plan from 2015, page 56, I believe, it tells in that, that estimate that we were already 10 employees short of meeting the minimal standard, and whenever we can't have all our positions filled during the year, that's even farther behind we are. So that's the only thing I'm trying to point out there. We're getting caught up minus the one seasonal that left us on Monday and a part-time employee. We're finally back up to a full staff, so we're looking pretty good. And that's all I have for your update, depending, or pending your questions.
Councilmember Rick?
Thank you for your report, Mr. McCormick. I've been getting a lot of feedback from the community about tennis courts. I understand we have one over at Aga Park, but it's in, needs, needs improvement. And the reason I'm, I'm told I'm getting this is both Mesa Ridge High School and Fountain High School have started locking their tennis courts up in the evening and on the weekends. Also, Wide Field Recreation, when they're not there, when they're not open, they're locking up their tennis courts also. Do we have any tennis courts other than the Aga Park Court?
No, we don't. That's the only one we have, and like you said, in years past, the school district used to leave theirs open, and now that they don't, the only tennis court we have available to the public is at Aga Park, and I will not deny it's in dire need of a lot of, a lot of restoration down there.
Okay. What I would ask is when we do the budget this year, I'd like to see what it would cost us to, to bring that tennis court back up to make it usable for our residents.
Okay. Just so the, yourself and the rest of the council members know, we've been discussing this in our park and rec advisory board, looking at the cost to bring back up that tennis court and pickleball court, we're looking roughly a little over $200,000 minimum, closer to probably 300 if we do it right and nice. The advisory board has, has really asked me to look at just adding pickleball courts because that's what we get the most requests for. We can get four pickleball courts in that space with nice fencing and new netting and lighting for around the same price of putting in the one additional tennis court. I know tennis is, is popular with some residents, but from the park and rec advisory board point of view and what people were asking them more when they talked to them about park was definitely pickleball, but I'll bring the numbers on both of those.
And Mr. Trainer, if this is, this is one of those projects to where if we need to go into the reserve to do, I would be willing to personally support that because it's the only, the only court that we've got. Whether we do, whether we do tennis, pickleball, or tennis and pickleball, that's another discussion that we can have later on, but you know, if, if we don't have enough money in the regular budget, I personally am willing to go into the reserve to get that fixed up.
We will bring, through the budget process, we'll bring a list of budget requests to the city council for discussion at that point, and we'll be including those, of course.
Thank you, sir. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on what Councilman Rick was talking about, the, the courts. I think we need to listen to the advisory boards and listen to those that are saying what they want in our city, and if pickleball is it, then we do what we need to do to kind of move forward with that, and whatever you need, Gordy, I'm, I'm here to support you and whatever that budget constraint allows us to do that, but just know that you got my support on that, okay?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Scott, we're going to have a chance, though, to look at the reserves. How many are there? Why, why we have such a large reserve right now? We're going to have that conversation before we start.
It'll be part of the budget process.
Okay. Okay, perfect. I think it's really sad that D8, and I assume D3 and Wide Field, I, I think it's really sad that they're locking the tennis courts up. I mean, I can see like after dark, I don't know. I just used to take my kids to play tennis a lot, and we'd have to drive from court to court to court sometimes to find a place that wasn't busy. So, you know, I know it might not be as popular, but it is a sport in the schools, and so a lot of the kids need that practice time, you know, for tennis, so I don't want to say it's completely abandoned tennis if we don't have to. But I, you know, pickleball is popular, but I want to look at the whole thing with pickleball because at, at Colorado Municipal League, there actually was a session I didn't go to because we don't have pickleball courts, but it was problems around pickleball courts. I mean, obviously, and I don't know if that's noise, traffic, I don't know what it is, but I want to make sure we look at the whole picture of it before we create an issue, you know, along with everything, so just look at the whole picture. Okay.
Yes.
That was funny because I had tennis, pickleball on my list, so you got it to it to me. Anybody else? Anything for parks? All right. And the splash pad is open until Labor Day?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, and it's open, what hours again?
It's open from 10:00 AM in the morning to 7:00 PM at night.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. All righty. And I have three cards here tonight, so if you, did I skip something? Commander Racine, how could I forget you? Racine?
Well, he's not doing anything. He's over there.
You said Racine. How about Cristiani? How about Cristiani? Okay. Are you looking over there?
Unless he wants to present.
Ray, did you see the panic look on his face over there?
For the record, though, the city attorney and police chief vote for tennis courts. That's just for the record.
Yeah, you, you coached tennis. Yeah, okay.
Although, in 10 years, it may be pickleball for me, but that's another story.
Yeah. Well, pickleball, is pickleball in the Olympics? Not yet. Okay, but tennis is, right?
Tennis is.
All right. And so is flag football, so that'll probably be pretty popular in a few years, right? They're going to, yeah, they're going to have it in next year.
And the reason District 8 locks their tennis courts up is because of the vandalism. They really spent a lot of money two years ago to refinish and, and do, do the, the entire courts were all done up nice, and because of the vandalism, they just can't keep them open, so that's why they're locked.
Are they locked when school closes, or?
They lock them whenever, yeah, when school session's done, they lock them. They're locked on the weekends. You can't get into them. They, they just couldn't afford the amount of money it was costing for the vandals coming in there, so it's unfortunate.
That's really sad because then, then we get citizens coming in there frustrated because there isn't anything for the kids to do on the weekends, but we locked up.
I used those courts myself, and I am disappointed they locked them, but I understand it, too.
Yeah, I do. Yep.
Okay, so not to take up too much more of our time tonight, Councilman Rick had asked that I provide some clarification on the license plate reader slash dash cameras that we have in our police cars now, so I'm going to give a quick presentation on that. What you see on the board right now is an actual photo of what's in our police cars. We have the, the camera there that's sitting below the rearview mirror, and we have the officer's MDC in their car that shows kind of the display once a hit is confirmed or once a hit is received. Next slide, please. The camera you see here, if you can see that at the, right at the middle of the screen on the top of that kind of roll bar, that is the camera that comes with the dash cam, so that monitors a detainee in the back. It's a very valuable tool for the officer to be able to, to see what the, what the detainee is doing in the back to make sure it's safe for them, among many other things. So that's, also comes with the dash cam. It's a package. Next. So the use is, the main purpose for these cameras that we got was for the dash cam. It's for recording the officer's actions, recording the driving behaviors of DUI drivers, et cetera. So the main purpose of these cameras was just to record more of our activity, not necessarily the license plate reader. However, super nice bonus is they are license plate reading cameras, and so the cameras are constantly recording, just like the officers are, like my camera's recording right now, but doesn't actually do anything until I turn it on, then it rewinds itself 30 seconds, and then that's what we recover. Same thing with our dash cams. They are constantly recording. Once the officer activates his emergency lights on his vehicle, that activates the dash cam, rewinds it 30 seconds, and then starts providing that data. The LPR, license plate reader, captures readable images of license plates. They're compared against our, our typical NCIC database of stolen cars. And so what happens is, as the car passes, if you go to the next slide, Chris? As the, as the police car passes a stolen car and reads that license plate, the license plate is then immediately put into that officer's MDC display that you all saw on the first slide. Once the license plate has been read and the officer then has to go verify it, so in a couple of slides, I'm going to show you the example, but the officer has to verify the alert that's come on the screen because as we're going to show you here, it can't differentiate states. So you may have a car license plate, ABC 123 in Colorado and ABC 123 in Montana, and the Montana plate is the stolen car, but you're in Colorado reading the same plate. So it can't, so that's, the officer always has to verify what they're seeing on their screen. Reads, the cameras read from 50 to 75 feet away, which is pretty good, and it's instantaneous. It can read multiple vehicles at once. It can read if an officer is sitting at an intersection, and everything that that camera can see, it'll read that plate of, say, five or six cars that's surrounding that police car. It'll read all those plates. Yes, ma'am?
So you said the officer has to verify the plate matches. Are they doing that before the traffic stop occurs? So we might not even know their chicken is out.
Correct. We would have no reason to stop a car until we were able to verify that plate, assuming there's no other traffic violation. If, if the sole reason is the, the license plate hit, the officer has to physically match the license plate to the car that's showing on the screen, and I'll illustrate that maybe in a couple of slides, maybe to answer your question a little more clear. The cameras have a 30-day storage of memory, so we can go back, and if not all the time plates are reported stolen or cars are reported stolen right away, so we can go back if we've passed that car at some point, and maybe we, the officer, oh, I remember seeing that car, I saw it four days ago, I'm going to go back and see if, if it showed up on my, on my LPR. We already talked about bullet point three on the states. Next. So here's an example of an Axon LPR alert. This is a live example that we had here on CNS, and I'll say Fountain Mesa, I might not be exact on the location, but an officer is driving the opposite of this vehicle here, and the license plate that you see in the, oh, sorry, can you go next slide, Chris? Yes. The license plate there you see is what the officer saw in his, on his car, and that's the actual vehicle there, and so the officer has to turn around, does a U-turn in the middle of CNS, and then gets behind that car and verifies that it was the plate and that was the car that was listed as stolen. So then what happens is the officer has to make a determination if he's going to follow. He's in a marked police car, so chances are the person driving the stolen car realizes, well, there's a police officer behind me, so what are we going to do here? Officers do what's called a felony stop, if you could go to the next slide. And this is another kind of example of the LPR alert, but an officer will do a felony stop on that vehicle, and when I say a felony stop, that's usually not an officer by himself. This particular instance, there were no officers available. The officer felt it necessary to do the traffic stop by himself and then wait for backup to get there. Basically, he was just giving the driver commands and waiting for other officers to get there. So, and he was headed to another call for service when he gets the hit, so depending on the priority, sometimes the stolen car will take a, let's, if he's going to a, say, domestic violence in progress, and he gets a stolen license plate hit on his car, it's up to him to determine which is more important. 99 times out of 100, a domestic violence in progress is going to be more important than a stolen car. That's just, that's just the way it is. So we all know stolen cars are very, the crime is very popular in Colorado, high, almost as high as it's ever been, I would say, so these cameras are very, very valuable to us. What I will tell you is, and I'm going to present this as Scott Trainer had mentioned, it'll be a budget ask, a budget request for a item that we're going to be asking for is the Flock cameras, and you guys have heard me talk about these before. Some neighborhoods have the Flock cameras right now, some businesses have the Flock cameras, and we're allowed to view that, but once, once we become a Flock customer, this camera, this Axon camera and the Flock system will integrate and talk to each other. So whichever system has the more rapid response to the license plate, the stolen vehicle, that will then be the, what the officer will see. Flock is instantaneous, just like Axon is, they're going to communicate, they both read the same databases on stolen cars, and that just enhances the ability for the officer to react quicker and to, to get these stolen cars off our streets and the people arrested that need to be arrested, so.
Can you take a minute and just explain what a Flock camera is?
Yeah, Flock camera is, there's different kinds of Flock cameras, but traditionally, what we're going to be going to is, is a, a Flock camera is a surveillance camera slash license plate reader, same as what's in our cars here. Cumberland Green Neighborhood HOA, for example, has installed two or three of them, and we were successfully able to go back and view the surveillance on those cameras, knowing the date and time of the crimes, and we were able to arrest some suspects on some vehicle break-ins. So Flock cameras are stationary cameras that are going to be placed throughout the city, and it'll allow us the ability to know when a car passes that camera, where that stolen car is, and then every camera thereafter will update us of where that car is going to be, again, giving the officer the ability that we've never had before to know exactly where a stolen car is coming into our city and leaving our city. The hope is that we get to the car before it leaves our city. And so that's the Flock camera versus the Axon LPR, but they both have the same functionality.
So Chief, could you, do you guys post the number of stolen vehicles that you have apprehended? So Chief, could you, do you guys post the number of stolen vehicles that you have apprehended with these cameras, since we've instituted those, and is that for our public to be able to see too?
It can be. We only have four of the Axon cameras right now in four police cars, so we're pretty minimal, but we can publish, publish how many? We're sitting probably at five or six right now, off the top of my head. Five or six confirmed hits on cars where we're actually able to stop the car and arrest the person. And just, we've had these cameras three months, maybe. And that's six people we've gotten off the street that are in stolen cars.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good benefit, so that the residents or our citizens can see that.
Absolutely.
The investment is worth it, and that we are getting these criminals who are taking your possessions off the street, possibly returning their, these.
And we all know the, yes, sir, we all know the attached crimes with stolen cars. It's not stealing the car and driving it around for fun, it's all the other things that go with that. And so, yeah, it's extremely valuable tool that we hope to be able to use.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Yes, sir. That's all I have. If there's any other questions, thank you very much for your time.
Councilmember Rick, and then Councilmember Duncan.
No questions, just thank you very much, appreciate the report on, to help us keep the public informed. Thank you.
Yes, sir, anytime, just ask.
Just for note-taking, if Flock is F-L-O-C-K?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so just like you were saying about these cars are being stolen, they're being stolen to commit other crimes. I talk, you know, trying to figure out why our insurance is going up. So the cost is being, you know, tripled down to us. So, thank you for getting those cars and getting these criminals off the street. Again, I would like to see the number that we're getting in and out of our city, if you can, if you, you know.
Yeah, that's, we can absolutely capture that data and provide it to you, and I think that's a great point you bring up. There's so many trickle-down effects of a car getting stolen, and who pays the owner of that car, and then the crimes that are attached to it, there's so many things. So I will put that together in our Flock presentation and make sure that you guys are all aware of kind of what we're asking for, and that's a great point. Thank you.
Chief, one of the things I constantly hear about from people is the frustration with cars driving around with registrations that are six, 12, 18 months. I saw one up in Springs that expired in 2020. They're not, they can't have insurance if their car isn't registered.
That's correct.
And if their car isn't registered, it shouldn't be on the road, and they're not paying the road taxes to...
That's correct.
And they get frustrated because it doesn't seem to be a high priority in stopping these people. But yet, if we get hit by them, once again, we're the victim, now like Councilmember Duncan said, our insurance rates are going up. I had an hour-long conference with my insurance agent today, so.
Yeah, you're right on a lot of fronts. Is it a prior, is it a top priority for police? No. Because we just have so many other things that are a priority. Now, I will tell you that when my traffic unit sees a vehicle with expired tags, they're getting pulled over and likely getting a ticket. So while we're not out hunting for them daily, I will see, I'm sure I'll see somebody today driving home that'll have expired tags. It is a problem that Department of Motor Vehicles is trying to address. I don't know what their strategies are, but it's, once, during COVID, and when things weren't really happening, is when we kind of lost control of that. And I, we all see the cars out there, so we do the best we can and try to fix that problem, you know? But it's a widespread problem. And there's one thing I wanted to mention about these cameras. They're not Big Brother watching. We do not have and will not have the ability to just tap into Flock cameras, or any other camera that we have, and just watch it randomly, just to see who's coming and going in your neighborhood. That is not the purpose, that is not what we're, is designed for. I don't have the staffing to be able to do that. We will solely use these cameras for apprehension of crimes that are, have occurred. It's not really a preventative tool for us, it's a preventative tool and a deterrent for the neighborhoods that are purchasing these. And so we will be reactive, not proactive, looking at the footage, unless we have a crime we're investigating. Otherwise, we're not tapping into these folks' cameras, and I know that was kind of a concern, so I want to make sure I get that out there.
Okay, Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was gonna bring that up too, that this is not a Big Brother thing. And if you did, we don't have the manpower to even do that, and we wouldn't do that anyways, because that's not the intention of those cameras. So just thank you for bringing that up.
The only other camera we'll have will be a pan tilt zoom camera. It'll be a fixed camera at a high-traffic intersection, such as Fountain Mesa and Mesa Ridge, or Fountain Mesa and up there by the New Maverick. We'll put a pan tilt zoom camera there that we will watch traffic, or if a crime happens at Walgreens, we'll look at that camera to see if the car passes as they're leaving, but that's about it.
Okay. Any other questions from councilmembers? Thank you very much, very interesting. All right, thank you for requesting that. All righty. Okay, so I'll go back to the cards. It's not quite time for it, but if you wanted to say something tonight, please take your time and fill out a card and hand it over to the staff over here, and so that when it's public to be heard, you have your time. So that takes us on to board commission and committee reports. We have none tonight. Number five, correspondence comments and ex officio reports. Mr. Trainer, and then just go down the row with anybody who's got something.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I want to report is just to let the council know that our deputy city manager, Todd Evans, is at the Colorado Springs City Council meeting tonight. He won't be joining us. He's there representing the city of Fountain's interests relative to the AMARA annexation and explaining to them the impacts that that's gonna have on our community. So I just wanted to give, give the council a little bit of awareness about where he is. Thank you.
Yeah, I was there from 12 to 3:45, and I guess they didn't even start AMARA till 5:00. So I pass the torch to Todd, who, and they have been at that council meeting since 10 o'clock this morning with, yeah. So, so we are fortunate. Councilmember Duncan?
Yeah, so I think we should have some type of briefing or something put together for the community. I'm getting a lot of feedback that community members think that we're just handing land over and we're not concerned about it. And it would be nice to have some type of, I don't know, some, some type of webinar about our role and, you know, and how we ended up here.
Yeah, we can put something together, that's probably a good idea. We'll figure out the right medium to do that, but I think it's not a bad idea at all.
Anybody else down the row?
Just three quick things, Mayor. Just to kind of get everybody aware, we're gonna be enhancing our traffic safety, trying to analyze where our traffic units need to be, and we're gonna make those moves internally, so you'll probably see more officers out there in school zones, et cetera. The new schedule and fines for the model traffic code that was adopted a few months ago is going live with our officers now. This will allow for more uniform enforcement to include commercial motor vehicles, truck routes, things like that. A lot of the high complaints we have, that'll help with us enforcing that. And importantly, for this weekend coming up, or next weekend, I guess, the airshow is coming, the 15th through the 18th, Pike's Peak Airshow. The reason I want to mention that is it's gonna have traffic impacts, not in the city of Fountain, but leaving the city of Fountain to go north on Powers. Two-hour blocks of time, Thursday through Sunday, between the 15th and the 18th. The closures, it's gonna be hard closures, no traffic's gonna be able to pass when that airshow's going. August 15th, from 2:45 to 4:45 on Thursday. And then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the 16th through the 18th, 1:45 to 3:45, Powers will be closed. Nobody's going in or out. So note that when you guys are traveling around. Thank you very much.
And that's Powers Boulevard?
That's Powers, correct.
Okay. 15th through the 19th? So when people hear an airplane going over low or something, they don't need to get all panicked?
No, the Blue Angels came into town a couple of days ago, and they were flying around. It's, I think it's kind of cool, but it does frighten some people that aren't used to this. So yes, we're gonna have lots of air traffic around in the next, for the next week while they're practicing.
Okay.
And they do fly over Fountain, so go out and enjoy the Blue Angels.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
Just real quick, following up on what Chief Cristiani saying, yeah, that's, I think, one of the really cool things about living in Fountain. I live right in the flight path of the airport, and Sunday evening, about 6:30, I was walking up to check my mailbox, and I got to watch the Blue Angels fly by. And so that's, that's really awesome. But I also wanted to follow up, you know, the chief made a shameless pitch for his favorite recreation, tennis, for him and the city attorney. And I just want to let you know that Chief Graham and I, we also have a preference in, but we play rugby in the goat head patch, so we're good to go.
In a goat head patch, okay.
But thank you, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Nothing real consequential this evening. Very grateful for every drop of moisture that we're getting, keeping our fire fuel moisture levels high, which obviously is a good thing, and keeping us out of burn restrictions. The county came back out of burn restrictions last weekend, and so grateful for the moisture, keep it coming. And that's all I've got this evening.
And the best thing that can help you guys out, if people mow their yards, keep their weeds down, and...
And that is, that's a good point. There is an inverse effect later in the season. As we're getting this later, mid-to-later season growth, we're just rearranging our fire season to later in the year. We're not canceling our fire season, we're likely just rearranging it. So mitigation and abatement is our friend when we get this kind of growth.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, City Clerk's office?
We have nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay, but congratulations are in order, right? You are now our official deputy city clerk. Congratulations. All right, IT, anything?
Nothing new from IT.
Okay, well, thanks for doing a great job. All righty. When IT fails, everybody looks at you, but when it works, you're just ignored, right? And that's good, right? All right, anybody down this way? Councilmember Rick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. At our last meeting, someone in the public had said that when people come up to the podium and ask questions, they don't get answered. That's kind of sort of correct. We typically, when people come up to the podium, we don't answer the question right there in the middle of the meeting. But either the city staff, the city council, or the mayor will 99% of the time follow up with the individual whenever we can. There are some times we have legal restrictions to where we're not allowed to discuss certain things, but we do get with individuals, one-on-one, to discuss items that are brought up in the meeting. So I just want to make sure the public is aware we are not ignoring people or just blowing them off when we don't answer them in the middle of the meeting. That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Applegate?
Just a reminder to everyone, Fountain Fall Festival, September, Monday, September 2nd, and that registration is due in two days, but those parade entries are free this year, so my hat's off to the chamber. That's pretty awesome. So hope to see everyone there.
Councilmember Estes? Councilmember Hinton?
Yes, I just have one item of reporting. I was able to attend the National Purple Heart Ceremony this past Saturday with the mayor as one of our guest speakers. I really appreciate her talk and her thoughts on the Purple Heart and those that serve. Also, Mary Amy was there. So it was a good event for me to be able to attend and to be able to be alongside those brothers who have served and those who have ultimately gave the ultimate sacrifice for this country. So I'm actually, this is gonna be on the record, but I'm happy to be back. I was out last week sick, but it feels good to be back and to be with you and to be able to, you know, continue to move this work forward, so thank you.
There's something going around, and it is hitting people hard, so wash your hands, everybody. Councilmember Hersbrunnen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say it was my privilege to attend the Colorado Springs Prop Colocation of Navy Week this week. And so as someone who has a Navy family, spent 10 years on a naval air station, the sound of jets is music to my ears. So it was just a real treat to see those uniforms, dress-white uniforms, here in Colorado Springs. And the message from Vice Admiral Fuller really was to express the importance of the Navy, even into a landlocked state like we are, the importance of what they do, and to really just highlight all they do for our country. So it was a real pleasure to be there.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. I just want to echo from the chief about the rain that we've been getting. My heart goes out to the families who have lost their homes in the fire. Also, we're losing trees that are valuable to our, you know, ecosystem. So just want to say that I am grateful for the rain that we have. We have a lot of crickets. I don't know if anybody else has seen all the crickets everywhere, but they're everywhere. My husband says, "Oh, I wish I could go fish it," but there, I don't know what we can do about the crickets, but they're everywhere. I had a really busy day today. I went to Law Day at the Southern Colorado HOA. I am in a HOA in my community, and they talked about affordable housing. And one, two of the things that we don't think about when it comes to affordable housing is being able to afford HOA fees and metro district fees. So those things can be a deterrent to people owning homes. And they did go over a lot of legislative issues that will be coming up this coming season regarding HOAs and foreclosure on homes. We know that that puts a lot of people that can't afford to pay or get behind on their HOA, they start facing foreclosure and the amount of fees that they can charge for either attorney fees or how much they can charge fees, period. So just to say that that's coming down the pipeline this coming legislative season. Small business, this is Small Business Month. I've visited some small businesses here. We're hearing that a lot of businesses are closing. They had the Acculades Luncheon today for women that are in small businesses, and I don't know how they come up with, who was the winner? Because if you look at the slate that they had to choose from, I would have hate to have to choose who was the winner, because they all are winners. They are doing phenomenal things in our community. I also attended the El Paso County Economic Development Meeting they had at the library here today around, I wonder if it was 2:00, it was earlier today, about the Community Development Block Grant Program. And one of the things that she did mention is that they have a website on the El Paso County page. It's El Paso Housing. If you type that in, it should come up. And they have an Affordable Housing Directory. And two of them that are here in Fountain is the Villas at Mesa Ridge and Fountain Ridge Apartments. I do see online that people are having a lot of, a hard time paying their rent and looking out for help. But we do have these two places that are available here in Fountain to call to see if there's a waiting list, or how can you get your name for those places. I also saw that we, okay, so from July 1st to August 31st, we still have time. There's free rides, and it's been on the website here in Fountain, and I was so happy to see that. I know that when it's, you know, free rides, we get better. We have our kids that are out of school, and they can go and go get a hamburger and then come back home, so glad to see that. The Pike's Peak Regional Department, they had new code changes. And what made my antennas go up, that it had to do with homeowners, not just contractors. So there are things that we, as homeowners, have to change in our house that will be effective. So if you go on Major Electric Code Changes 2024, it will tell you what changes need to be made in your home to be in compliance. And another thing, it even incorporated dorm rooms. You know, my son is getting ready to go to college, and I thought, whoa. So there are things even the colleges have to change compliance in the dorm rooms. And I'm sure, you know, with kids cooking and everybody having a refrigerator, that those things have to be in compliance. They even mentioned foster care, parent homes, group homes, nursing homes, and common areas that have to be in compliance. And even our kitchens in our homes, they were changing what kind of outlets and where they had to be placed in our kitchens right now, if you own a home. So just want you to be aware of that. And that is Electric Code Changes 2024, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. All righty, well, I had a ton of stuff to do, but we'll just keep moving along. Okay, all righty. So that takes us on to item "Public to Be Heard." Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. And we're gonna be real fortunate, because Colorado Springs had an hour and 47 minutes of public comments today, so I hope we got a little bit less than that. So I'll let you all want to, Matt's over there like, what? All righty. First card I have tonight is John Langley from American Legion, so please come on down.
Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me come up here. I'm John.
Mayor, council, thank you for letting me come up here. I'm John Langley from the American Legion Post 38. I'm the commander. Just want to tell you a couple of things that we've had going on and what we've got coming up in the near future. The American Legion was able to donate $500 worth of backpacks for the Backpack Bash that were given out about, what, two weeks ago. And so some of our upcoming things that we have going on, Friday to August the 16th, we're going to have a Cuban pulled pork, black beans, and rice with fried plantains that we'll be serving. Friday, August the 23rd, will be our rider's steak night. August the 16th, the auxiliary is going to be starting their coat drive. I know it's still hot right now, but that cold is going to come soon enough. So new coats for kids and lightly used coats, we will, we will give out also. We are going to be in the Fountain Parade. Our riders are going to lead the parade this year, and then we'll have a float in there. And we will also be doing a joint fundraiser or a membership drive over at Metcalf Park with the VFW 6461 during that timeframe. November 9th is when we are planning to do our joint Veterans Day Ceremony over at the American Legion. With the Veterans Day falling on a Monday, people like myself have to work on that day, and I think we will just get a better turnout if we have it actually on that Saturday. September 30th, we're hosting a golf tournament at the Country Club of Colorado. So if any of y'all are golfers, and you need to be because I need your money. But if you play golf, it will be at the Cheyenne Mountain Resort, and that money is what we're going to be spending a lot to help everybody out that we do help out. I would like to say thank you to Mayor Thompson and Councilman Hinton for being at the Purple Heart Open House that they had. Nice to see you there. And then it was also nice to see Councilmember Hersberg at the VFW 6461 at their, their annual picnic. And because Commander Heims couldn't be here, he's got things going on there. He wanted to let everybody know that on September the 2nd, after the parade, they're doing a resource fair for veterans at the VFW. So there will be local veterans service officers and organizations there to be able to help out there at the same time. Say that again?
What was the date on the resource fair?
That's on September the 2nd, the same day as the Fountain Parade. So after the Fountain Parade, veterans can go over to 6461 and learn all about those good things that local service organizations do for the area. And if they have free haircuts.
What was the date on that golfing tournament?
It's September the 30th. And if people are interested, they can go to www.legionpost38colorado.org, and there is a button at the top that you can push for golf tournament. If there's sponsors that would like to sponsor a hole or something like that, we would be glad to take their money and give you the advertisement that you need. And then we also have the availability for golfers to pay for their outing at the time. Okay, I'll be glad to take them. Thank you.
All right. I am not a golfer. Could probably, I have hurt myself enough in the last few years with broken ankles and broken arms. I could probably find some way to break myself with a golf club. So probably, good I stay away from it at that point, huh? All right. All right. Our next card is from Carol Waring. Please come on down and state your name for the record.
My name is Carol Waring.
Oh, well, let's turn the middle button, I think it is. There you go. You're on.
Perfect. Am I on now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yes, my name is Carol Waring, and I have lived in Fountain since 1965, '66. I worked for the city of Fountain for many years, and I was part of the charter. What brings me down here tonight is I have been fighting the city of weeds for years. This year, I have gone to code enforcement. I've gone to, and I don't know her name other than Lexi. She had me send pictures to her. She would get back with me within two to three days. That was two months ago. I've got, I had weeds seven feet tall next to my driveway. The whole entire yard looks like that. There is a tree that I have fought for 15 years. I have, at my own expense, because the city told me, I could trim it. Everything is on my side. I cannot go 70, 80 feet in the air. I've got at least four feet that their trees are in my yard. It's ripped off the shingles. I have to go out every morning and every evening and take a bag and pick up twigs right down to tree limbs. It tore the roof off of my house. I had to pay for that. I'm spending money constantly for the weeds and all that kind of stuff. I don't think that is my responsibility, and I have been asking for 10 years. I also am concerned about the fireworks. I have fought that for years. They always say, if you get caught, you're going to get this fine. Well, last year, the last several years, last year I had 10 days, five before the 4th, five after. Four to five hours of fireworks. I called the police. They said they'd be right up. Then I found out that we weren't even answering calls on that because we were understaffed. I hear code enforcement is understaffed. I think it's great about what they're doing for the kids and the parks, but we have a cemetery, and it looks like crap. And I have, over the years, carried 150 feet of hose and resodded it several times. We don't have the bug control as far as I know. I don't see the street sweeper. I don't see anything. And to me, as Fountain gets bigger, we get less as city residents. And I would like to know why the ordinances are not being enforced.
Right. And I talked to you before the meeting, and I appreciated you sharing all those thoughts with me. And I said, please feel free to come up and talk to us as a whole. And Scott and I, if you will reach out to us, probably Scott would be the easier one. He's the, he's got the toughest schedule to coordinate with. So anyways, and we are going to be meeting with you and going over some of those items.
Okay. Well, I just, I think something needs to be done, you know, because I have said, and I hate to say it, but we should be called the city of weeds because that's all we have. Up and down the streets, up and down the highways, that's all we have is weeds.
Very frustrating. People won't take care of their property.
Yes.
Very frustrating. I agree.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Troy, maybe before we meet with her, if you could talk to Scott maybe, and we can understand how a tree works on private property on both sides and all that kind of stuff.
I've been told if it's mainly dead. And when I, I've got pictures. And when I look up in that tree, I see nothing but dead. And every day, that my yard, my deck, my patio, everything is covered. And I'm tired of picking it up.
I understand. I understand.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. But Troy, if we could make sure we understand that before we meet with her.
Yeah, brush up on your tree law.
All right.
It's more complicated than you think.
Everything always is. Yeah. Yeah. And I've stated before, we're usually pretty patient with our neighbors. So we usually wait until we're super frustrated to call code enforcement, and then it has to go through the process, which seems like it just takes forever. But just like if we had, if it was us on the other side of the ticket, citation, whatever they call it, we would want that same due process.
I just don't think, I just don't think the city cares about the scene.
We do.
And I, because I've been working on it.
Okay. Well, you would need to come up the mic again. So, but I can hear what you're saying. But maybe we can talk about it at our meeting. How's that? So, all right. Okay. The third card I have is from Destiny Angel. So if you'd please come down and state your name for the record.
My name is Destiny Angel. Hello, council. It's good to see everybody again. I'm here to do a follow-up and talk about some things that have been going on. I know, like, anybody that's in here and that is aware of who I am, you've seen me in here before, and I've had some concerns that I've brought to your attention. I'm still concerned. I don't really know where to start at this point, so I'm going to just go with what is exactly right in front of me. I see city council. I hear your beautiful laugh before this meeting, and it really made my evening. Madam Duncan. City of Fountain, pure Colorado is what I'm seeing. I just, before this meeting took place, we all stood and pledged allegiance to the flag and One Nation Under God. And I don't see that anywhere in this building, anywhere. And I feel like that is one of the biggest problems, one of the biggest issues that we have with, that addresses a lot of the concerns that I do have, is there's no Under God anymore. It's pure Colorado, and it shows a picture of a beautiful water fountain. When I'm telling you that the water here is bad. The water that's coming out of my faucet is harming my plants, my skin, my hair, and my pets. It's false. It's just like it's fake to me. It's, it's, it's false. Which brings me to this next thing. People in positions of power, people have jobs and they're getting paid to do their jobs. And what I'm finding is that there are people that are not doing their jobs. And when I had brought it to those people's attention and said, hey, when this person's not doing their job, who do I go to? Which I was given a list of chain of command. So there are so many people in this town that know my name. That's why it's not a problem for me to stand up here in front of everybody, because half of the people in the town have already heard me on the phone and know my story and don't nobody care. I care. I am a resident of this town. I am a native. By a show of hands, would anybody be willing to, they're native, they were born in Colorado Springs? That's three. I'm a native. I've been neglected by my town. It hurts me as an individual, as a resident, when I came to you guys seeking help. And the reason that I'm here and I'm speaking on my behalf is because there are other people like me that are unfortunate or in poverty on Section 8, on government assistance. Unfortunately, I had to utilize those resources, and I'm really glad that they were available. Due to Section 8 was the only foundation that I did have. And that's even trying to be ripped out from underneath my feet. What the problem is, is that when I've addressed all these people in positions of power and said, who's going to take responsibility and/or accountability for this, this, that, and the other, a list of things that are, that are not good, that are a direct reflection of many people in this room due to neglect and just not following up, not answering phones, not returning calls, not being allowed to speak, not tonight. I was here last weekend, or the last meeting, and it was like, you know, I've been wanting something, something more than nothing. And Madam Mayor, you said, no, not tonight. I just needed something, and somebody was, somebody was willing to give me that something. And no, not tonight. That is exactly the kind of feedback I've been getting from this town. And so I went through this chain of command here, and I've addressed everybody that I would need to address and say, hey, I've got these issues. And nobody was able to help me. I got a lot of, that's unfortunate. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to, when the people aren't, who corrects, who's credential checking here? Who checks your credentials? The judges, who judges the judge? Who is in charge of all of this and this, these things being allowed to take place? And people like me, and there are others that don't even come in here. They don't even come in here because they don't feel like they can talk to council. We need that. We need to be able to have that. And you spoke up on that once before, and then you went and backed it up. I felt it true in your, with what you had to say. And Madam Mayor, when you said it, and you were like, well, no, open door policy. Right prior to me saying that, I had just told you that. You never even called me back. Like 10 times I called you. That's.
Ms. Angel, if I could get you to wrap up your comments, your five minutes is up.
Are you able to give me something more than nothing this time?
I gave you a lot of suggestions last time. You had a frustration with D-8, and I said, you go to the school board and you talk to the school board members that we are not the D-8 board. You had a frustration. You didn't like the way the court was handled. Then you can go to the county court, and you can, you can file papers there. A restraining order against the person you want would be done in the county court. The issues that you're talking to us about quite often are things that are not within purview of anything we can help you with. And, and, you know, you've talked with Chief Cristiani several times. And so we've given you the tools and to talk to the right people, and that's up to you to take advantage of that. So thank you very much for coming in tonight and sharing your thoughts.
Well, thank you for the time. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to Item 7, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have one item on the Consent Agenda tonight, and that is the meetings from the last, the minutes from the last meeting. What would council like to do with the Consent Agenda? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as written.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Councilmember Estes?
Oh, nope, sorry.
Okay. All righty. We have a motion in a second on the Consent Agenda. Any deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to Item 9, New Business. 9A, Consideration of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda There Were None. Item 9B, Report on the Implementation of the Water Fund Stabilization Plan and the Status of the Water and Electric Utility Operating Reserves. Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. And I am here to give you an update on the utility funds. And I'm going to, I'm going to start with some basic background.
Mr. Blankenship, could you move your mic a little bit closer?
Yes, I can. Whoops. I lost my presentation. The, what we have up on the screen, I'll get to in just a few minutes, and it's a copy of a chart or table that's in, in your report. But I want to give a little bit of background first for the, the audience and for some of the council members that may not be aware of some of this information. But the City of Fountain Electric Water and Wastewater Utility Enterprise was formally established in 2002. By definition, that's the Colorado Constitution definition, an enterprise is a government-owned business. In this case, the governing body of our utility enterprise is the city council. And the City of Fountain provides two utility services, electric and water. The monies for each of the utility services are accounted for in two separate groups of accounts known as the electric fund and the water fund. And that's what I'm going to kind of talk about this evening. The water fund, for many years, has relied upon loans from the electric fund to balance the books at the year, at the each year end. In March of this year, the city council approved a resolution putting into place a formal plan that will eliminate the water fund's interfund loan to the electric fund and establish an operating reserve in an amount equal to not less than three months of operation and maintenance expenses. We began actually with implementation or working on improving the financial status of the water fund even prior to the passage of the resolution to establish the Water Fund Stabilization Plan. But the plan also put into, put into place actions that were retroactively applied in fiscal year 2023. One of the things that occurred was there's a waiver of the payment in lieu of franchise fee to the general fund. By code, by municipal code, both the electric fund and the water fund pay a payment in lieu of franchise fee or tax to the general fund, subject to the city council's approval. And so in 2023, as part of our budgeting process, that particular payment was waived. We did a, performed a We did a, performed a allocation study, basically looking at the services that the general government provides to the utilities, things like human resources, finance, and legal services. And so we reallocated the indirect costs that are charged to both the water fund and the electric fund based on that allocation study. Things like the interest earned on the city's ARPA allocation for water projects was transferred to the water fund. And then the GID number two, there were revenues as part of that that were targeted for the water fund that were transferred to the water fund. And those are some of the actions that took place officially in fiscal year 2023 to, to really start to implement the plan. One of the things that I would like to note for you though is that the passage of the water stabilization plan played a very crucial role in maintaining the utility's credit rating. We had a review this spring by Standards and Poor and we were able to retain our existing credit rating when, based on our, our financial status, we were really anticipating the possibility of getting de-rated for the second time in a row. So we, we fared very well with our rating agency. So as far as the, the progress, we've, we've made significant progress in 2023 and there's a couple of financial health or stability indicators that we look at and that we're reporting and included in the report. And one of those is, is up here on the screen right now, and that's the utility fund's operating reserve. We have three years and each of those, excuse me, each of those is the year-end financial numbers. And you can see that at the year, at the year-end of 2021, we were, our combined reserve was only $122,000. We're required by our bond covenants and our loan requirements to maintain a certain level of operating reserve. And that's what the required column is. So at the end of 2021, we were almost 800, or excuse me, $8 million below where we were required to be in accordance with our covenants and loan documents. Once we were able to establish and understand what was happening, we started to make some significant differences in how we operate in the utilities and how we manage the financial aspects of the utilities. As, as a result of that, in 2022, we increased our combined reserve by $2.6 million. We still came up short by, by 5.6 million. But in 2023, when we implemented and retroactively implemented the water fund stabilization plan, you can see that we, we went from a reserve of 2.7 million to a reserve of almost 7.5 million. And it put us less than a million dollars from being on target to be in compliance with our, our loan documents. A second indicator that we, that we monitor and look at is kind of a performance indicator to see how the revenues versus expenditures compared. And in 2023, once again, part of the implementation of the plan, part of how we are managing the utility and the utilities funds, you can see that in 2023, on the electric side, our revenues were $4.1 million greater than our expenditures. And our, and the water fund, our revenues were $2.2 million greater than, than our expenditures. As far as where, where we're headed now, we are definitely, as you can see by these, and I'll go back to the last one that gives you a better idea of overall, we're on an upward trajectory with regard to the, the, the management of the water fund and the electric fund. We will, this year, we're continuing and will continue to take a conservative approach to spending while closely monitoring revenues to ensure that the continued growth of the operating reserve. To date, the actual financial performance and to date, as is in 2024, is better than projected. We're on track to meet the combined operating reserve this year. The water fund three-month operating reserve threshold is expected to be met by 2030. And what that means is we will have a positive operating reserve in both the water fund and the electric fund. So we're on target for that for 2030, but we are anticipating that we are going to receive a settlement for the PFAS, which could accelerate meeting that threshold by 2028 or sooner. One thing that we are, also have underway as part of the implementation plan is to ensure that our water rates are adequate to meet the needs of our existing water system. And a water cost of service study and rate design is underway and is expected to be completed by October for presentation to the council. We have not had an adjustment in water rates since March of 2020. So by the time we have this study completed, it'll be almost five years since water rates have been adjusted. Part of that was my doing in that I felt like we needed to get a really good understanding of where we were at operationally and financially before we went back to the ratepayers to consider an adjustment. We've made a lot of changes operationally. Like I say, we've, we're taking a much more conservative approach to, to spending and closely monitoring our revenues. We do a financial check monthly. I get a report monthly and we look at our revenues and our consumption and we use that to kind of predict where we're going to be at year end. And if it appears like last year that our water revenue is going to be less than projected, then we even tighten the belt tighter on expenditures to ensure that we end up in a situation where we have a positive number when comparing the revenues to expenditures. So that is my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions? Councilmember Rick?
Can you go back to the first slide, please? So at the end of 2023, we had, our reserve was $11.6 million. Approximately, how many months of reserve is that? Because you said the goal was three months' reserve. That is 11.6.
The 11.6, the 11.6 is the electric. So our combined, in order, three months' worth of combined would be 8.5 million. That's the required number.
Okay.
So that would mean that on the, the water side of that 8.5 million, on the water side is about 30% of that and the electric side is, would be about 70% of that. So about 5.6 million on the electric side and around 3 million on the, the water side.
So if we need 5.6 for the electric reserve and we have 11.6, we roughly have roughly six months' reserve rather than the three. Is that what I'm hearing?
On the, on the books, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's correct.
So this is gonna be painful for you to hear.
Oh, that's, but I think I've got a, I've got a, before, before you share your thought with me, we're, once again, we're, we're obligated on the combined.
I, I understand.
Yes.
Okay.
Which we're not in compliance with at this time.
When you come before council to make a request to raise the water rates, to bring the combined up and get the water intact, what I would ask is to take a look at, can we, at the same time, reduce our electric rate so that we can provide some relief to the ratepayers of the city on their combined utility bill? Since our reserve is so high, and if you go to the second slide, please.
I got it right here.
You know, we're showing, we came in roughly 4 million over in 2023. Can we give some of that 4 million back to when we asked the water rates to go up? That's all, I'm asking you to look at it, okay?
Fair enough, yes. And we do have planned to do a cost of service study and rate review on the electric side also.
Okay.
So we will do that. We just started the water first because that's the one that's in most need.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
You bet.
If we can give the ratepayers, if we can go to the ratepayers and say, yes, we're increasing your water rate, but we're also gonna reduce your electric rate a little bit, that may help it be more acceptable to the residents and more acceptable, at least to me, for, for doing that.
And I can tell you that starting in January of 2028, our wholesale electric costs will be dropping. We are currently, our wholesale provider is Excel Energy and we are paying just slightly less than seven cents per kilowatt hour. That's our purchase price. When we transition to our new supplier, Guzman Energy, in 2028, that energy charge will go down in the neighborhood of about four and a half cents. So that will be a definite savings that will be passed on to the, the customers in 2028. But we will, we will do the cost of service and take a look at where we're at on electric at the same time. It'll probably come in after the water study because we're already underway there, but we, we will do that, absolutely.
Thank you for, for taking a look at that.
Yes, you're welcome.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Hinton and then Councilmember Duncan.
Yes, I appreciate the numbers and, and your hard work and your staff's hard work. Yeah, I would agree with Rick on this. Anytime that we could kind of give back to our ratepayers would be grateful, with all the costs of everything kind of going up.
Sure.
And water and electric. I mean, I hear it all the time.
Yep.
People say that Fountain thinks we got this, this, this water is made of gold. And, and I'm like, well, you know, this is, this is the rate, current rate that we have to pay right now. But if we can, at any point in time, you know, look at giving some of that back to our ratepayers, it'd be great.
Sure, absolutely.
The question that I have is, in the expenditures, does that include the bonds that we're paying?
Yes, we pay, that's, we pay interest and we pay principal on our bonds. In electric, $3.5 million of that $11 million expenditure is attributable to debt. And the primary, primary purpose for that debt was the purchase of a very small portion of the Southern delivery system. And quite frankly, if we did not own the, that small portion of the Southern delivery system, we would not have adequate water resources to serve our existing community. But fortunately, the decision was made many years ago, or maybe a decade or two ago, to participate in that project and it gave us the resources that we need to be able to provide water to our existing customers. And we currently, in our storage, we, we store raw water predominantly in Pueblo Reservoir. We have waters, our water storage buckets or reservoir is full, which equates to about three years' worth of, of water use by our existing community.
Councilmember Hersberg and then back to Councilmember Hinton.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just wondering if you anticipate any capital improvement investments that might be necessary as we're forecasting forward for city growth? And maybe any impact that the popularity of, of electric cars may be having on the existing infrastructure?
I can tell you that in our, in our cost of service study for water, we have capital improvements. We've programmed five years' worth of capital improvements, but they are capital improvements only for the existing system. Because our ratepayers are the ones who pay for the system and then there is zero capital dollars for new growth. Because our approach is, is that new growth should pay 100% of the cost to serve new growth themselves, not putting the cost to extend infrastructure or to purchase water resources on our existing customers. We, we put that on the developers, so the only capital we have in our plan is the capital that we need to upgrade, maintain, and sustain our existing system. And you had a second question?
Right, and just the impact that maybe the popularity of, of electric cars, Mayor.
Yes, that is something that we are going to look at when we do our cost of service and rate study for electric, is kind of what I call modernization of our, of our rates. Right now, we currently have a single residential rate. My thought is, is that we're going to look at and maybe break that into two rate structures where you have a high-demand residential rate and then a standard or low-demand residential rate. We will also look at for commercial charging, a, a rate that would apply to, say, if a gas station or any other business wants to go in and they want to create a commercial charging station so that they would, they would own the chargers themselves and they would charge a rate to whoever comes in and charges their vehicles. But we would be the wholesale, basically, or the, the supplier of the electricity and we would have a rate, a specific rate for the, that type of customer.
Councilmember Hinton?
And I just want to make sure that the, our residents understand that for water, so this is for our current ratepayers and things that we already have in the pipeline that are already built up as far as residential and commercial. This isn't for anything, because our water situation hasn't changed. It's still the same. Just want to put that out there as a reminder. But I just want to make sure that our residents understand that.
Yeah, absolutely. One, one of the things that we have, is really our, our top priority in the water utility is, is being able to provide our existing community with the resources that, that they need to, to use whatever water that, that, that they feel is, is appropriate. And so we have done studies to see exactly what is the level of capacity that we have in our system. And we've compared that to the use that has occurred in the past. And I can tell you that over the past couple of years, consumption has dropped some. I think it was 2021, maybe we had a maximum year of consumption. And so we use that as a baseline to compare with our existing system's capacity. And our existing system's capacity exceeds the amount of water that was used on a peak day in that, in that peak year. So we have more than adequate supply for our existing customers. Now, we don't have a lot of surplus supply for new development, but we have more than adequate supply for our existing customers. And as I indicated earlier, our reservoirs are currently sitting at full, which means that we have about equivalent to three years of storage in place.
Okay, any further questions from up here?
I, I would just like to tell you, I truly appreciate this really very different way of looking at this and, and reporting this to us. We, we've seen servicing debt and, and this and that, and we've just seen it more in graphs. But I really appreciate this because we were able to put together this plan and make substantial changes to way things are being done so that we can adequately have those reserves there. And to me, that's a much more manageable approach to do it. And I truly, truly appreciate that. Thank, thank you for the time and your, that you and your staff have put in on this because I think this is, I think this is a much better way to do things moving forward. There was nothing bad about the way it was done before, it was just different. And you guys may have understood it, but this makes it, I think, a little bit more understandable for all of us because the minute we saw it, we were like, okay, we have to figure this out. And, and we didn't back away, we didn't kick the can down the road five years. We didn't say, let's see if we can go another couple of years. We all up here pretty much looked at it and said, we've got to do this and we've got to do it today. So thank you so much and I, I truly, truly appreciate that. Yeah.
Yeah, you're very welcome. One of the things that has always been important to me and something that I brought into this job is not just, as you're utilities director, I'm not just managing the operation. job is not just, as you're Utilities Director, I'm not just managing the operation of your utility, I'm managing all aspects of, of your utility. And one of the most critical aspects of the health of a utility is the financial aspects of, of the utility. And I want to take that opportunity to, to let you know that Catherine Pucci is here this evening. Catherine is the Utilities Budget Administrator, position that we created a couple of years ago, when we started to take a lot closer look. And she does a phenomenal job. She does all of this number crunching. I, I go into her office and I say, hey, what about this, what about that? And I'm asking questions. And then we get together and we kind of, you know, we, we bat things back and forth, but she's a great partner, but she's the one who does all the number crunching. And, and she's really a tremendous asset to, not only to myself, but to our utility and, and our utility customers.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to open up the audience. Are there any questions from, or comments from anybody in the audience? Please come down to the microphone and state your name for the record.
My name is Destiny Angel. This is addressed to the utility company and the water, and I'd made that comment about the water. There, I had had the city come out and test the water, and they did that, they flushed the, they flushed the fire hydrant across the street from my house, and they tested the water, they're like, they were very thorough, showed me, Des, it's okay, you could drink the water, it's not going to kill your dog. I was like, okay. But my plants, like, like I, I could spray my, my car and wash my car, my front yard, and I can't see out of my, out of my windshield due to the white residue. And I don't know if I'm the only one, okay, it is an issue, so I'm not picking on Fountains if I just, let's just.
We live at, we live at the base of a mountain, and by the time it gets down here.
What I was thinking is a solution, maybe, maybe for residents or new homeowners in the area or something, maybe the city could offer them some kind of rain softener, or some kind of water softener as a welcome, a welcoming gift to help them. Because my dishes are destroyed, all of my dishes are destroyed. When I move from Fountain, I'm going to have to buy new dishes. And aside from that, that's just an idea, I think that would be a really beautiful thing to offer to the, to the people, newcomers of Fountain. And the other thing was, is I was here last, the last meeting, and they were talking about the utilities, and they showed a whole chart and how it breaks down, and you can go online and you could see your usage, and I think that's really very awesome that you were able to do that, because it breaks it down Barney-style for you, so you have no questions, like it's in your face. But the only problem that I did have with that is, I basically went off-grid because I was, I was hurting for some funds for a couple of months, and so I thought maybe reducing and unplugging everything, just to keep the, my utility bill lower, because I, like I said, I was hurting. My usage went down dramatically. I went to the utility company and I said, what is this? And they said, well, we could see where it drastically dropped, like you like fell off the face of the earth. So I'm like, yes, I did. But why didn't my utility bill change? And that was never resolved. And then I talked to, I don't know if it was you, but I talked to, I talked to the boss down at the utility company, and he kind of broke it down, and he sounded like he knew what he was talking about very well. But it still didn't change the fact that the numbers didn't change. A utility bill of $300, $400 is a lot of money, and I wasn't using anything, I wasn't using the power. So could you help me understand that?
Absolutely. We have significant, in fact, are probably our number one expense, and we're, we're a cost-of-service utility. That means we don't make a profit. We're, like I said in my presentation, we're a municipally-owned business, so we're owned by the city, we're part of the city, we're a department of the city. And so we don't like a, say, Xcel Energy or Black Hills, they have, they're an investor-owned, so they actually have to make a profit for the people who invest in their company. We do not make a profit. So what we do is we take the cost of providing the service and we equitably distribute that to the different customer types. So the type of service you're receiving, you should be paying for, as if someone else was, was getting a different type, they would pay for that too. So there's no cross, what we call subsidy, between customers. The reason why when you reduce your consumption and you still have a utility bill is because it costs us, our biggest expense is personnel and maintaining and operating that system. Just to have that system in place is our by-far largest cost. Our smallest cost is the incremental amount, and so that you can, by just be, by being connected, there's a, there's a pretty significant cost associated with that. And so, for example, on our water bill, for a residential connection, I think it's about just to be connected, and, and I think we include the first 1,500 gallons in that, but it's about $42. So if you, you reduce down to 1,500 gallons or less, you're going to pay $42 a month just to be connected to the system. And I, I, my bill, I can tell you, my bill that I just got at, at my house with, with me and my wife was $167. I try to manage my utility use, and like you, like you indicated, in our new billing system, our, our online portal, you can look at your electric use, and you can look at that at any time, and you can see what you've used the previous day. We're in the process of implementing a system on the water side that will give you the ability to do the same thing, but we won't have that completed until probably this time next year. That's a project that costs over a million dollars just to do that. And then we spread those costs. But the good news is, is once again, as part of the financial management of the utility, we're very aggressive about going out, and we have a grant that's paying for about half of that project, that we're bringing some of the federal dollars, we all pay federal income taxes, and so we try to bring that money back into our community and benefit our ratepayers. And so what's a million-dollar project, more than half of that's being paid for by a, a federal grant. And that's part of how we try to manage the finances of the utility to keep that cost down. And so that's, that's, that's kind of how that, that works. And that's why you're, you see, even though you reduce your consumption, you still have a utility bill.
I was told that's just the way that it is, that's how we do things around here. Well, that's what I was told. But shout out to a woman named Mary in customer service.
Mary Villain, yes.
She's, I think there's a couple Marys, but she's got great customer service, and I just wanted to give her a shout out publicly.
Thank you very much, yes. We have two Marys who work in, on the front, on the front lines over there. So thank you very much for that compliment.
Sorry, in rearranging the packet here a little bit, I lost, I don't have a page. All righty. Are any other questions or comments from anybody in the audience? Councilmember Duncan?
I just want to echo the comments of Sharon to the, so Dan, please let your staff know and want you to know how much we appreciate all the hard work that you're doing for our utilities and bringing our costs down.
Thank you very much.
And, and I'd like to go back to, we haven't had a rate increase in four, five years.
It'll be five years.
It'll be five by the time that we have it done.
On the water side, yes.
And when I get customers that only come into my business every seven years, they about keel over because they think the price should be the same as it was seven years ago, you know, and not accounting for any new government regulations that came along and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yes, our expenditure, our, our cost of doing business has gone up significantly in the past.
Right, and that's been kind of a commitment up here. I mean, there's been times where you were like, well, we should have it, and we were like, if we can put it off another year, let's, let's do that. And so that might be reflected in part of that document, too.
Absolutely.
So, yeah. And, and I really, really, I see you're late, Gordon, I really, really want to echo what you said, and you really, really stress that we make growth pay its way in this town. Our neighbors up north are arguing, probably still arguing right now. Are they still going? They've been going since 10 o'clock this morning? Okay. On this item since about 2:00. About putting what they call a rider, basically just an extra fee. Every single customer from Manitou Springs to Colorado Springs to whoever gets their water for the first 12 months, over $8, right? Around eight something?
Almost nine.
Almost $9 to pay for an AMRA annexation here. And, and we have said we will not do that, and that's one of the reasons they left here.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Because, because we said, you're going to pay for it. So that is your council and your staff hanging tough for the city of Fountain and saying, if you want to come build down here, you're going to build the infrastructure, you're going to bring the water at this point, right?
Correct.
And, and so if we get a little rate increase, we're not getting a $9 a month increase to pay for something that doesn't even affect us. And that's going to go on for at least 10 years. Now, not $8 for 10 years, but up and down and this and that, and, and commercial customers have a huge rate if that goes through, and you and I are going to be paying for it every time we shop up there.
Yep.
So, all righty, Councilmember, so I just want to tell you, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Scott, I appreciate you that. You've pounded that into us. You know, it's going to pay its way. And a lot of times, we don't understand what that means.
Right.
We, we just don't understand what that means, you know? All right, Councilmember Rick?
Dan, since I've got you here.
You have me captive.
I have you captive. Madam Mayor, I ask for.
We may unplug you.
I asked, I asked for a little leniency, I want to go off topic for just a second. Can you give us a quick update on the SilverBlaze online payment system?
I have been told that we have resolved the issues and that we are, everyone is able to, I don't know if everyone has done it. I know that I was sitting on the front porch of my neighbor across the street who chastised me for not telling her in advance that we were making a change, and it took her two days to get it done. So, but I've been told from my customer service staff that they have, they have all the issues addressed and that folks can make, get connected. I talked to one customer in particular, and we got, he was unable to do it, and, but he got some help from his daughter, and we got them connected to our customer service folks, and they were able to walk them through the process. So I'm not saying that everybody's connected or hooked up or signed in this time, but if you're still having problems, please call us and we will walk you through the process.
Thank you, that's all I had, Madam Mayor.
And it didn't help that that other thing came about the same time.
Yeah, cloud.
I'm sitting up at the DMV hearing about your issue while their issue has crashed, and I can't get done up there what needs to be done, and yeah. I don't know who was first at this point.
So, just a question to the, the payment. So if a person pays through their bank and it goes directly to their account, will that payment still count?
All payments count.
Will it go towards their utility?
We will find any way to take their money, okay?
You know, if you, if you, it sounds like what you're, maybe if I can just kind of see if I understand what you're saying, is some banks have bill payment.
Yep.
And you set up bill payment through your bank.
Right.
And then the bank actually has that interaction.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, so that's a different interface.
Okay.
Than the customer portal.
Okay.
The customer portal is when the customer directly pays.
Got it.
And, and you can pay with a credit card, but I wouldn't, I mean, if you have to, you have to, but you, you have to pay like a three and a half dollar charge to do that. If you, and if you want to just pay directly from your checking account, you can do what's called an ACH payment, put in the information, that's what I do, I type in, every time I type in my banking information and, and send it in. But, but yours also, you can, you can pay in person, you can, and we're working on being able to pay with a credit card in person, there's, there's some issues associated with that. But you also, yeah, if you, if you have arrangements through your bank, I know on my bank's website, I could set that up, but I choose to do it myself directly.
And that was just a question I had from a couple ratepayers, that they didn't have to worry about that silver key, they could just.
Correct, yeah.
Keep, keep what they already have.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So my experience was, I got a utility bill with a valent to do, which never happens because I'm always on auto pay. So I did sign up, but it was super easy, absolutely love the portal, I love how you can break down the usage. We have solar, and so we have a little extra information in there, but super appreciate that, and now a bill's paid, and it will continue to get paid that way. But yeah, if you're automatically paying that way, you do have to update the information because it won't just pay and you'll get a bill due, like I do.
Correct, correct. And we've been, and if someone got kind of caught in that trap, so to speak, we did not charge, and if we did charge, we would take off any of those fees that are automatically applied by the billing and collection system. We're, live in a world of technology, and most of the time, it's great, but sometimes it does things that we wouldn't do as humans, and it automatically applies things, and sometimes we as humans then have to go back and fix that, which we're always happy to do.
Like I said to ITE there earlier, nobody looks at you when it works, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, my dad used to run a sound system in a church, and you know, a few hundred heads turning around and looking at you the minute something squawks, so.
Exactly.
Yeah. Another thing some people were saying is, we have a process. If you get behind on your payment. There's a process. So if you're struggling still to get this set up, and you've been paying, and you're not behind.
Right.
Except for that little bill that you got, right? They didn't turn her water off, right?
No, I hope not.
Okay, and turn her water off. So you have to reach a certain level, and there's a process.
Right, there's a threshold.
And, yeah, and that, that is not a week or, or two?
No, in fact, we have, I think, a pretty generous threshold. It has to hit a dollar amount, and then we give notice. And if you ever get a cutoff notice, and if you feel like there's, definitely if you feel like there's a mistake, call us and we'll walk through that with you. But if, for some reason, you just can't pay your bill, contact us and we will help you. We have assistance programs that we work with, the Salvation Army, that admin, they, they're a kind of a third-party administrator, because I, it's kind of a conflict of interest if we do that ourselves. So we've, we get state funding, and we also put local funding from the utility itself, water revenue into, into that, and then the Salvation Army will process that. We will also do payment plans, you know, especially if you've, if you've been paying your bill, we get people who are paying their bills on time for years, and then all of a sudden they come across a, a bump in the road, you know? And we'll work with you and won't charge you any additional fees, we won't charge you late fees, we won't charge your interest, we will set up a payment plan for you and help you get over that hump in the road.
I'm, I'm with Councilmember Duncan, it's getting very warm in here. Can we open the doors and then maybe see if we can get a little air circulation or something? Don't, don't want anybody.
That I can't help you with.
Don't want anybody falling asleep up here, right? Okay, are we through with the Dan Show? Okay.
Thank you very much for your, thank you for your support.
So, all right, sounds like you need to do a podcast, the Dan Show or something like that, huh?
Oh, yeah, great.
All righty, okay. All righty, that takes us on to item 9C, Resolution 24-031, a resolution authorizing an expenditure of $254,818.67 for FEMA. We did have this on consent originally, I asked to have it pulled off just to kind of explain a little bit more, that's a larger amount of money, just want to make sure all the citizens know where it came from, what it's used for, what it's going to be used for, how we got it, you know, and all that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. So if, as, as you can remember, last year in June, we had two major floods come through the city, caused significant damage to our facilities, our parks, our streets, our detention ponds. The Parks Department actually made out the best with FEMA, we had the most dollar amount of damage. We had significant damage to our trails, in some parts of our trails, we had craters that were probably three feet wide, six feet deep, and about 15 feet long. So, just so you know, we had to fill those holes immediately because there were a risk to our citizens. So the Parks Department got the material, went back and filled those holes. We've been reimbursed for that work we've done to the amount of $15,000 approximately. FEMA, whenever they do authorize you these grants, they do it in different ways. For a small city like ours, they decided to give all the money to the state of Colorado. So the state receives that money first. The state decided that they would only pay for the projects that were over a million dol, or mil, the, the million-dollar mark upfront. So since our project is less than a million dollars, we have to pay the initial cost. The initial cost is estimated at $254,000 roughly, and so that's what I'm asking for here tonight, is to be advanced that money so I can start the bidding process and get these projects going, and get, get a reimbursement so we can start our next project, FEMA project down the road, which will be another $300,000 project. On the $254,000, we'll only get reimbursed 75% of that from FEMA, which comes out to $191,000 and $114.01. But we don't have to pay that whole 25%. Part of the reason the state took the money is because the state. Part of the reason the state took the money is because the state wants to help out small towns like ours. So instead of us being responsible for that whole 25%, which was $63,000 and some change, we're only going to be responsible for $31,000, 12.5%. The total reimbursement amount that we will receive is $222,966.34. So out of our Parks Reserve Fund, we have quite a bit of money in there, and so I've asked you to consider taking the money out of there to pay for these repairs, and then once the repairs are done, we can put it back into that park reserve. Pending your question, that's all I have.
Okay, you can't put it all back in park reserves, though.
It depends on where we take it out of, from, if I'm not mistaken, yes.
Okay, because we're not getting reimbursed for the whole amount?
That's true.
Okay, right.
Our, our shared cost.
Right, okay. Any questions from anybody up here? Thank you for going after that money, and, and, and for trying to get it, you know, keep, keep moving ahead.
Yes, while I'm up here, I'd like to thank our, our Fleet Director, Bob McDonald, he's the one that went through this whole process with me and, and got us started with FEMA. And just so everybody knows, the reason it's taken so long, the process with FEMA took roughly one year before they came up with their decision, and then we had to wait for the state to talk about reimbursement, so.
By FEMA standards, that's probably fast-tracked.
That is really fast, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, do I, do I need to read that resolution in the record, Scott, or?
No.
Okay, all righty, thank you very much. That takes us on to item 10, City Council Agenda Request.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, we need to vote on it.
I told you I lost the page, so, and I gave it back to you too soon, so, all right. All right, thank you very much. All righty, okay, so Resolution 24-031, a resolution authorizing an expenditure of $254,818.67 for FEMA parks and trails. Do we have a motion? And Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve Resolution 24-031.
Okay, Councilmember Hersberg? A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further deliberation? All right, seeing none, please vote. All right, thank you.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All righty. Okay, now?
Now.
Now I can go on? Okay, it takes a village some nights, huh? All righty, that takes us on to item 10, City Council Agenda Requests, are there any to my left? Councilmember Rick?
No requests, Madam Mayor, just want to state, I now understand why Chief Graham's knee's all messed up if he's playing rugby on a regular basis. Scott, you may want to take a look at-
On goat heads, on goat heads.
Goat head patch.
Goat heads. That's why his wife has to patch the knees of his pants all the time, huh? I watched rugby in the Olympics, that is-
That's rough.
That's crazy, that's crazy. I probably would have done it when I was 18, though. All right, anything to my right, any agenda requests? All right, okay, seeing none, Troy, do you need us for an executive session? All righty, okay, then we are adjourned. And Colorado Springs is not adjourned. I got a text, the Broadmoor came out against it.